Are you ready?
Just so you know, the role call is in the wrong spot.
I think it's still picking up your log.
Okay.
I am good to go.
All right. Go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Jennifer Hearn.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Hack.
There.
Lori Knessy.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Go ahead and stand with the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all the DCF parents and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting on the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business. It is not to be considered a public community meeting. You are assigned to public comment during a meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First up, I will make a motion to approve the June 30th, 2020 board minutes, July 15th, special meeting board minutes, and July 17th work session board minutes if I could have a second.
Second.
Mr. Hack, is there any discussion? There's no discussion. Call the board, please.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Hack.
Aye.
Lori Knessy.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Hearn.
Aye. Motion carried. And it takes us to special reports.
Actually, we have two special reports tonight. And we ask Dr. Brian Bontempo to speak first. He is the superintendent at Auburn Career Center. And as we're trying to work our way through a plan to reopen schools in a safe manner, I have asked Dr. Bontempo to present to the board just so briefly, because we do send quite a few students over to Auburn Career Center, and we certainly enjoy our relationship with Auburn, and they're doing a fantastic job preparing for the upcoming school year.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. Thank you, the board, for having me here this evening. In front of you, you have two documents. One of them is the Back to School Plan. It's at Auburn Career Center. That is posted also on our website. We have a COVID-19 page, so anybody from the public can go and take a look at that there. You'll note at the bottom, you'll see that it's kind of a continually updated document, and what you have in front of you is the first iteration that was passed at board meeting on July 14th. We already know that there's a mass change, that things are coming down, and we're going to be modifying. We have another board meeting on the 4th of August. So this plan is kind of evolving. The other document is the reset and restart for career and technical education. And so, in the couple of minutes that I'm going to comment, that is a lot of what we follow. So if you think about it in terms of the restaurant industry and all the rules they have to follow, those set of rules apply to our culinary arts programs. And so, we draw, within that document, it gives us guidance and permission to be able to operate in that manner. Same thing, if you've gone to a hair salon, our cosmetology program has to follow those protocols. We spent a great deal of time through the month of June and July, had about 200 items to work from through seven different committees, and drilled down and condensed into a practical document that is this Back to School Plan. We had not only our attorneys, but the Lake County Board of Health review it, walked through the building. Even as recent as this morning, we had teachers and other folks walking through the building. We're going to also provide an opportunity for parents and students to do the same, because we want to hear from everybody, make sure we're getting it right. And so, this will be a continual process. The really nice thing that we have that's different than just about every school is in the fact that we have the current technical education guidelines that we can follow, is the fact that the Career Center is really a big place. And our students come into the building, and they'll go to their one program. Almost every program has their own bathroom and sink, so they don't have to leave the classroom. They have no more than 20 students, and in many cases, the lab classroom that they're working in is thousands of square feet. If you've been in our building, you'll know the auto classroom, for example, five to six thousand square feet. It's easy for us to social distance. We had to invest some money in some technology, because some of the classrooms that we might have used while they were doing their classroom seating work, now we're just going to do it all in the lab and spread out, so we had to move some technology to make some accommodations that way. The good news is, is that we are able to do school the same way we did last year, with just some modification about how we move about the building and so on. But we're able to have five days a week school, first year students in the morning, second year students in the afternoon. And then, some of the nuances are just the same kind of issues that you might be dealing with, with social distancing in the hallways if you need to. Like I said, for us, it's minimal. Lunch period and things of that nature. So, if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer those. If you, anybody who's listening, is certainly welcome to go to our website and pay close attention, because after the August 4th board meeting, there'll be a few updates. We continue to communicate out to parents. So if you do hear from the community that they need more information or better information, I'll mean send them my way.
I always thought that it was a challenge every year. Brian does a great job with it. He pulls from a lot of areas of schools, and they have all different calendars. He tries to orchestrate and organize, schedule students and teachers and staff to be prepared to handle all the students coming in at different times.
Right. And we do appreciate the fact that, because we, the school districts still have to transport students to us, even though our schedules don't align. But Riverside has always been great about working with us to make sure that students, because our school year starts on August 18th, and so many of the students will be coming to us for only half a day until your student starts. So, and for us, it's a good way for us to get a start on it, and then anything we learn from that experience, we can certainly pass along to you folks.
Just a comment. So it sounds like basically it's almost business as usual for Auburn Career Center, given the size and the number of students and being able to face things in. I should know this, and I apologize for not, but typically, do you do first-year students during half the day and second-year students during the second half of the day?
Right. So that has not even changed. Right. Our traditional day is first-year students in the morning, second-year students in the afternoon. And then, because of that separation of time, we're actually able to do some cleaning to this particular situation. So we really haven't had any real schedule-like changes. A little more coordination on the drop-off and pickup time, just because we don't want students to be in the hallway, having to interact with time, which we're all nervous about. But other than that, school day is going to be the school day.
Sure. That's terrific that you bring up this topic.
Yeah.
That's up to you and your staff.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
So just for people in the public who don't know, maybe don't know everything about Auburn, how many school districts do you have?
Well, currently this year, we have 10 school districts. We're a public school. Last year, we had 11, but Newbury merged with West Yaga. But we, the last couple of years, last three years, we've had, we've set enrollment records every year, and we continue to go up. As a matter of fact, this year, we haven't seen any decline of anywhere, but more interest. We have about 400 students per grade, primarily juniors, first-year students, but we do have sophomores. There's first-year students and then second-year students are in the afternoon, and then many of those students start to do internship opportunities when they get into that second year.
Has the board ever visited Auburn?
I can tell you preschool there.
Okay. Would be a bad idea sometime along the line, if you want to refresh, take a tour of Auburn. It's an amazing place. It's changed quite a bit over the last few years as well.
So actually, I live in Concord, and I often use Auburn Road, so you can see the houses that your construction classes have actually made. And then, right now, there's three in a row, so three classes in a row. They're our projects right next to each other.
Right. It's really, the Career Center, the value add that students have that have gone through that experience, I'm obviously a proponent of every student graduating with a credential or certificate. We provide that opportunity for students. And so, the popularity of Career Tech just continues to grow. And Riverside, you guys, your school district is full of management.
Are we still the largest feeder?
I believe you are. I should have known that before I came. You have been for many years. But other than, everybody keeps, it's like I said, our numbers keep going up, so it's a nice problem to have for us.
Will be transporting students then they'll be taking?
No. Yep, from here.
From here.
That's, yeah, from here, we offer a bus route. Mostly, kids won't track here, just take the bus. Or just get dropped off at Auburn for the first two weeks.
Is that where we've always said it is, we pick up from here?
I'd like to add something that traditionally, because of the nuances of this year, we are allowed, it's been usually thriving to Auburn, had been reserved for second-year students. But as long as it's permitted by the school district, we're going to allow first-year students to, just for people's comfort level. If that's something that works out for the family, drop-offs, or first-year students driveway, we're going to accommodate everybody.
My first-year students on the property, that's like.
I heard that. So we have a parking space. He'll pay extra.
Mr. Miley has a question.
Yes, sir.
The labs, like cosmetology, restaurants, moving to the public, that's what happens here.
So the way we've written the plan is we're going to review it monthly. So the first one in August, no. Primarily, we don't do it in August anyway. We're still getting things done in the classroom and so on. And so, normally, we open those up in October, so we have our fingers crossed we're going to be able to do that by now, but we're going to roll that out one month at a time. So the goal is to do it, but right now, we're not doing it.
You know, the restaurants are pretty popular.
Oh, it's really popular. I know. We're all going to miss the restaurants. So as soon as we get the restaurant open, the better. But again, because the industry is allowing us to do it, it's really just a matter of when we're ready. So as soon as we're ready, we feel comfortable about us being able to offer that.
So not to belabor the conversation, but we're not often with you, so I'm going to ask questions as well on some of the things that we have going on here at Riverside. And so, we have a partnership with several of the schools in Lake County. We're going to do welding, Haynesville Township, HBAC, Perry is doing construction, and then Whitlock is doing EMT-type training there. What do you see as the future for vocational-type training? Obviously, you're saying you're growing. We are gearing up to that as well, and I know that we've had conversations with you, so we're not overlapping. We're enhancing, as I understand it. And hopefully, you.
So.
Where are we headed?
So if I could draw it up the way I'd like to, every student would graduate, would graduate, every student in every high school. Now, I know that doesn't mean everybody's personal agenda and goals in your district may be different than another, but what we need to be able to do is offer it, have it available for anybody who wants it. And that's really where the challenge is, because as I mentioned, our enrollment keeps going up. Inevitably, you're going to have waiting lists, and there's nothing worse than having a waiting list for a kid in high school that wants to have an opportunity. So the fact that Riverside is partnering with other districts, there's some inherent challenges with running career tech education and certificates based on license insurance and so on. It's something we do all the time. So it's really, and what we've said to the districts is, nobody's going to be able to duplicate what we have. We have, we have resources and have the ability, giant labs. We can do things that you normally can't do here, but you can certainly offer programs that help students make decisions in their own career pathways. And so, those examples that you gave are a great opportunity for students to learn, get credentials or certificates, and then they have made a decision, because we all know it's better for the students that it may have had an opportunity to make a thoughtful decision about their career, even if they don't like what they just chose. They're still better off having gone through that. So we support, we have meetings, we ask districts to come and listen to, here's what's going on in Career Tech. If you look at some of the workforce needs we have, we could offer 12 health programs and still have a need to fill positions. Everybody has limited resources, so it's really not a competition for anybody. We're happy that students are having other opportunities other than coming to Auburn, because like I said, there's nothing worse than having to say no to a student that has an interest in coming to our program. So I would say that the industry in Career Tech is getting better at making it available to traditional high school students, because the training and the equipment that's available, welding labs are expensive and large. There are now becoming more financially affordable portable labs, for example, that are not necessarily cheap, but it's something that you might be able to do locally as opposed to coming to a person. So.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thanks for coming, Brian.
Sure. Thank you. Have a great school year.
We also have another special report we added, actually, this afternoon. We have Matt Parsons here, who's a former student, graduate of Riverside, 2018, correct? And he is currently an engineering student at the Ohio State University. And he reached out to us because he has a special project that he wants us to consider, and he has been working with Dr. Malacher, corresponded last couple of weeks. I don't know if he wanted to add anything, but he was going to give a quick overview of what he's doing. It's a charitable organization to help get supplies for Riverside students.
So before Matt gets started, I just want to say that we have had before a couple of emails, but with this crazy, as the past few weeks have been, we finally only just got to meet today in person, and I'm super excited about the project that he and a couple of his friends have started to benefit the students at Riverside. Obviously, you're all on the matter, so I really want to turn it over to Matt, because he can best explain it, but it's a really good project, and a lot of good heart is going into it. So, go ahead, Matt.
Yep. So myself and three other graduates from the 2018 class founded a charity called The Backpack Fund, and the charity has two goals. One of the goals is to offer a scholarship in honor of a 2017 Riverside graduate, Emily Ringler, who passed away from cancer last September. So we're offering a $1,000 scholarship in her honor to the 2020 graduating class of Riverside. And the other goal of our organization is to provide school supplies for students in the district that have a need for them. And we are a funded, supportive organization, so we're currently working on fundraising right now. We'll be fundraising for the next three weeks, and then we are hoping to do some sort of implementation of awarding scholarships, distributing school supplies on August 22nd or 23rd. And then, our website is thebackpackfunohio.com. We are also on Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, all the backpack fund. And that's the main goals and purpose of our organization. We are not a nonprofit yet. We are a registered charity. We are a registered corporation. We're not making any money off this or taking a salary or any things, all three things, to serve the school supplies and scholarships. So those are the goals, the organization, and the background.
That's terrific. Sorry, Jack, go ahead. So it's important, I think, that some people hear as well about how relationships from Riverside actually continue on after graduations. I know that you are very close to the Ringler family. Could you talk a little bit about your relationship with the other members of the group and your relationship with Emily?
Yes. So the four of us on the team is myself, Charlie Ringler, Kato Velco, and Noah Levy. We've all gone through Riverside for a whole elementary, middle school, high school together, very good friends. Kato, Charlie, and myself ended up at Ohio State University. Me and Charlie were roommates, ran our first year. We got through classes in engineering together. Kato's also at Ohio State, and Kato, we're going to be roommates going forward next year. So we definitely continue those relationships very strongly beyond high school. Noah is also one of our close friends. We've been touching with him a lot. And I just knew the Ringler family from being involved in the community and spending time with Charlie, just knowing they're doing stuff with their family. Every now and then, I knew his dad pretty well from just local basketball and other sports and stuff in the community. So I did not have a super direct, close personal relationship with him like myself, but I've been so close to Charlie and seen him go through all that, it didn't take very much for me to understand what the impact that had on him. And that was just something I wanted to do to give back and support him.
What a terrific project these guys have taken. Emily's really wonderful.
So any shout-outs you guys can give? Instagram, Facebook, that's why it's here. So hit the upload out form, and we're going to post it on our website also for anybody who might want to donate. They can go directly to the Riverside website. And we'll be in touch with Nick, and we'll get that up for the calendar tomorrow.
So on the Riverside site, we're going to have all the Twitter and all that?
We'll have a link, yes. So they're going to, these two are going to communicate and get that publicity piece going.
I'll share it.
Oh, you hit it. That's what I told them. I said, they got Facebook pages.
Good for you. It's really great.
Thank you.
That concludes our special reports.
That takes us to old business. If anybody has anything? There's no old business, and how about new business?
Hi, I wanted to bring up, we previously talked about have we ever completed a self-evaluation of the board prior, and we were on all of the group decks. That's how we got it, at least with this one here. I did a little bit more research on what we would need to do in order to complete one in 2021 for the 2021 school year. And some of the things that we do need to do is, one, just come up with a job description for the board to make sure that we're all in agreement with our roles and responsibility as board members. And then, the second thing is, put together those, develop those goals and performance objectives that we want to meet. So there's a little bit of work that we need to do as a group to come up with that and put in place. And then, the schedule for completing that self-evaluation would follow the same as when we go to do Dr. Kales and Mr. Velco's evaluations. And what that does is it puts us into a good place to say, how did we perform as a board? And look at what they've done also, and make sure that we're all continuing to move forward with the goals that we want. So I wanted to bring that up for more whole discussion, because we do need to get some time on the calendar to work through, what does that job description look like, and what are our goals and objectives?
Well, and I think that goes well into what I was going to say, too, is that we needed to schedule our work sessions for August and September. So I think that we could very easily do both of those things, especially in our discussion that we're going to be having about the new position that we're going to be bringing in the district. So if we want to look, is that, that was going to be the September? August? August was going to be the finance one. We're going to get Mr. Velco to help us understand some of the financial things that we read, right? Things like that. So if we can all just grab our calendars right now, let's schedule that for August, and then if you would be okay with it, Lori, would you be all right with us doing that in September with the other piece for the work session?
Yeah, Mrs. Hearn, I just wanted to maybe interrupt for one second. We do need to schedule a special meeting in August. With us changing, we start dates of the calendar, we have to wait 30 days from the date of the official hearing, which was July 15th. So we do need to have a special meeting August 14th at the earliest, or sometime that following week, because it has to occur before the next board meeting, because the original start date is cool. So if we can work those two things together, and the two birds want stone, it might be beneficial to do that.
Yeah, the special meeting will probably be that much on the agenda, right?
It'll pretty much be just the final official proof of the calendar. We might have to do personnel things, like the way the school year is.
Okay, so what do you call it, a special meeting and then it's a work session?
Yeah, we call it a special meeting. It's a work session as part of it.
Yep. Okay. So it needs to be after the 14th. I mean, so that's a Friday. What do you guys think as far as Monday or Tuesday, the 17th or 18th?
I'm not available on the 17th.
Okay.
We're talking evening or?
Yeah.
The 18th is work.
Any days coming, please?
Jack? Do we want to do it a little earlier? We usually kind of push those special meetings and things like that, like around 6:30, 6:36? What do you guys want to do, 7?
Yeah. So why don't we go a little earlier, or at least 6:00?
I can do 6:00 if you guys can.
I can do 6:00.
You guys good with 6:00?
I'm good with it.
Okay. So 6:00 PM on August 18th. All right. September, our normal year board meeting is the 22nd. If we, to schedule the other work session, two weeks before, that would be the first day of school. I prefer not to do that on the first day of school.
Sure.
Again, do we want to do the following week, or do we want to just look at Wednesday and the night? What works for everybody?
So the night is, why don't we for me at this point? So I'm good there.
Will that be too hectic for administration?
I can't be any more hectic than the way it is right now. I mean, but that is a great question. So it is not advantageous. Let's give the night, no else.
You're good with that? Like, you're good with that plan?
I'm with the 16th.
Great.
Let's do the 16th.
You want to say 6:00 PM also?
Yes.
September 16th, correct. Those are the only two right now, Mrs. Grassi, right, that we talked about getting on here? All right. Excellent. And then, Lori, you'll bring what we need to the work session on the 16th to get started. Maybe you can even try to email us as a group, some of those, some of the items ahead of time, so we can kind of look at it and start.
Yeah. The OSBA provides engineer descriptions, so we can start there and see what works. Can you word it? Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Does anyone else have any other new business?
I have one other.
Okay.
So just with everything going on and all the social media out there, and just the discussion out in public, I often find myself thinking, like, what should we respond to? What should we? Because what comes across is myself, in my opinion, versus when I'm representing all of us as a board, right? Because people love who we are. So I just reached out to Mr. McIntyre just to ask some questions and kind of help myself. And he suggested that in the past, he's done a training on what we should say in public and what we should not. I don't know if that's the right way to term the training, but I thought it might be a good idea to see about getting him in to work on that with us also, just to remind us how we should respond to things and how we should in different situations. So I want to bring that up to see what the board thought.
I mean, I think things like that are always valuable. Dan's really good at helping us through those things.
For those who may be listening, Mr. McIntyre is just the attorney for the district.
And he's always willing to come in and provide those kinds of workshops and whatever.
Did you ever discuss with him on when he wants to do that?
I did not. I wanted to see what the board said, and if anybody's in favor of moving like that, I can reach back out to him.
So a lot of times in the past, what we've done with Dan is we've done it like an hour before board meeting, usually because it tends to be an hour at times to kind of be enough for those things. You know, if you want to talk to him and see if he wants to try to do the, you know, do the, August 25th is our next regular board meeting. If we wanted to have him come in at 6:00?
Okay.
Everyone can come in an hour early for that board meeting on the 25th?
Good check. That would work for me.
So you want to check with him, and then we'll choose on text and let us know if we need to be here at 6:00 PM, and we'll just all time, and we'll put that on our calendar. I think that's a great idea.
Our board meeting is on what date?
25th. That's what I showed.
Yeah, I know. I'm sorry.
And he's the 25th at 6:00. Any other new business? All right. That will take us to the Board of Education Committee and liaison reports. The first one is the Superintendent's Business Advisory. We do not meet in the summer, but once a new school year starts, I'm sure we'll get a meeting on the calendar. Curriculum and Programming and Boosters, Mr. Miley.
Okay. Curriculum and Programming, we had a meeting on July 10th, and we talked about distance learning plans. And we also discussed teacher professional development for 2021. And they're going to be doing that before, a lot of that, before school starts. And they're going to continue to look at blended learning, social emotional learning, new protocols and procedures, of course, and classroom prep and setup. and classroom prep and setup. A lot of it's, obviously, even from our last meeting, things change every hour. Governor spoke today. They'll be changing things on Thursday. He has a meeting. So the best news I can give to parents about that is to make sure you visit the website almost daily for updates. And there was, did, could you do the teacher survey? You did, right?
In terms of those who
Yeah.
want to or can't come back in a traditional setting due to medical?
You did have?
Yeah, we have some numbers for you.
All right. So that's basically what we talked about. Tom, anything you wanna add?
I didn't have, no, I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
And with regards to boosters, no meeting yet, and I'm sure those will end up being on Zoom meeting time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miley. Finance, audit, personnel, legislative, Mrs. Grassi?
We actually had two finance meetings since our last meeting. So we met at 7:00 AM on the 10th of July. We got through half our agenda. Talked about the possibility of selling our own proverbs, but we're unsure what we're gonna do there yet, simply because, you know, with the transition to the new IT providers and our shared service, we'll wait to see what a peer price would be from them. We talked about almost all of the agenda items on the finance agenda, with a few exceptions that are normal and regular recurring. We talked about item B on our agenda, which is what we won't be charging for check fees and ACH fees if they pay online. And then we would waive fees with a very minimal, minimal fee for those who want to pay by electronic check. Those are check fees. So we're gonna try and encourage that for people on campus. We talked about the COVID-19 supplies that we're purchasing, and I think Mr. Kales will have, has an example of one of the items that we're purchasing. Hopefully, he brought that with him, and then he will show us that, and that these supplies are not cheap, and they're very expensive. And although we're getting CARES funding from the state government, that's not going to cover the cost of all these things. For example, the one item that we have on the agenda is the partitions that we're purchasing, and that purchase orders are over $91,000. I just wanna make sure that the board are aware of that, and it's on the agenda. The stuff really is expensive. And then we're putting on the agenda here some blanket purchase orders for purchases of supplies that are up to $100,000 for right now. And that probably won't be sufficient, and we'll probably be having to do that again in the future, because most of those are consumables. We also talked about our CARES funding again, the money that we're getting. We're actually getting some additional money that's approved in the second round of the CARES funding. But again, even at that, it's still not offsetting the amount of money that we have, and cut from our budget for the state. And then we started to talk about the PI, the Personal Improvement, the Property Improvement levy that we have on down, or not on bail, but the funds that we receive from our PI fund and that forecast. And our second meeting was on the 23rd, also at 7:00 AM, where we talked about the vaulting lab and the bids that were open for that. And I believe that's on our agenda also this evening. And we started to talk about the funds review, of all the other funds that are on on the district books that are not the general fund. And so I know that we have asked Mr. Placco to begin to give the board some education and training on what all those funds are and what their purposes are. And you will see on tonight's agenda, I am D. On those of finance is approval of our grant funding. And so that's just one of the important areas that, if you look at that, that's over, I think, $2 million, if I was just trying to add it up in my head, that we spent on other items that are not, you would think are regular and recurring, because most of that is going towards salaries and instructional supplies, but they're for special populations. So we talked about all that, and so we got through a couple of funds, and we're gonna continue doing that at our next finance. So other than that, I don't have any legislative updates, because there's so much going on, and changes so frequently, that there's like no point in saying today what will be on the ground, so.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, Buildings and Grounds Operations, Alumni Association, Mr. Hatt.
There was no Alumni Association meeting, so I don't have an update there. I did see an email where they are still trying to figure out ways of raising money to support scholarships. I think all, everybody's aware of the duck race was the appropriate way they have raised funds previously. So that is now not an option, and might be one of the options this year. So they're trying to recreate ways of raising funds. And we'll be seeing there that there was no actual meeting. Buildings and Grounds, we met on July 15th, and at that meeting, we discussed the bids with regard to Parkview, Parkside and Riverview, for the concrete. There were two bids, and Mr. Placco, are you going to be talking more about that in your section, or?
We're kind of waiting for input from our attorney and my time. We're trying to get, we're trying to figure out. We can have a price, and now we're just trying to figure out who's responsible for paying that. And I think the only update is, we decided since it's not a safety hazard at this point with the concrete situation, that we'll probably defer that project to next year to have more time to get it done, more time toward the cure, more time before it starts with fall and school year. That way they have time to completely work properly in that rush later in summer.
Will it become worse?
It will probably, I would assume it would come a little bit worse, but I don't think it'll become a safety hazard per se, but, you know, obviously, time will tell on that. After our discussion of Buildings and Grounds and talking to the icons and our attorney, we have felt that it's probably best to wait it out and make sure it's done right, and make sure we know who's really responsible, have all those details worked out.
That is exactly accurate. So, so I think it's just an aesthetic situation now. Obviously, we'll have to re-schedule the situation, in case it evolves, as well. Mr. Weiner spoke at the, at that meeting as well, talked about the cleaning and destruction that's going on with the, within the classrooms. And then he also spoke about the, the cleaning and the landscaping business to be developed in schools as well. And the, the, Dr. Kales, there's also, you talked about, we had to get some things out of Haddon. You were, anyone else had an update on how ISTEM is doing, and if they're moving to, to Haddon?
Kind of appearing, I, I don't. I've been dealing with a little bit more with the playground and the bathroom, things that are going on in the, in the school.
Yeah, my understanding is all ISTEM stuff is in the building, and they just need to set it up in the individual rooms, as we're trying to clear out what we can with the staff that we have. Other than that, all I notice is that there's been a sign up at the front building for ISTEM.
As far as the, how far has that gone? We're moving forward, and that's good. As far as, at this point, we're doing, it's good news, because if there were issues, they would trouble us. Right, that's, just as everybody understands, ISTEM will be there at least for two years in, in Haddon. That's a good use of the school. They're gonna help us, and we're helping them, so that's a good deal. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Policy Committee and Strategic Plan, Mrs. Chris.
So we did have a meeting as a policy committee on July 23rd, just to review the policy that's on the agenda for first read. It's really just updates that you're applying to the policy, based on everything that's going on right now. And we did not have any strategic planning.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Superintendent's report, Dr. Kales.
Thank you. I brought some PPE equipment with me today. I know we spoke a lot about it over the last couple of months, but I wanted people to see what it looks like. We are spending quite a bit of money. It's not really out of the ordinary, because many other school districts are preparing to start the school year with plenty of these items. Our goal is obviously to keep the kids safe and also our staff from contracting or catching the COVID. These things, we never thought we'd ever have to get, but unfortunately, to start the school year in a traditional manner, we decided to purchase some of the items that you see here. Number one is, we're gonna have hand sanitizer in every classroom, and this is the dispenser right here. This dispenser holds quite a bit, I think it was like 700 liters, if I'm not mistaken. Um, there's, there's quite a few squirts in it. It'll be in every classroom. And also with this, each teacher will have two gallons of fill product, and there'll be another gallon with an actual squirt top, just in case something happens to the electric one. This is battery operated. It's no touch. You just put your hand over there, and the solution comes out. The solution is 75% alcohol. It isn't the bad type of alcohol that you've been reading in the newspapers. We also bought regular masks. We're asking parents, send their children with their own masks. We would expect something like, you know, what you have on Mrs. Harden, or any others, or remember what they have on their, on their face. We're trying to shy away from big major respirators that might, you know, hinder learning in the classroom. I'm hearing now that there might be an alternative to the mask, which might be face shields. I'm trying to get an answer from the Health Department. Originally, teachers were to wear face masks, and students, again, under policy, were going to wear face masks as well from grades three through 12. Now I'm hearing that these might be an alternative to that, which is a relief, to be perfectly honest with you, that they might be able to wear these instead of the masks. I need to check. Okay. I did talk to Ron Graham from the Health Department. He believes that that is the case. But before we commit to it, I wanna make sure that I'm not putting something out that's gonna get people's hopes up, only to dash their hopes if it's not the case. Like I said, we did purchase face masks. We have children sizes. We have regular sizes. These are just in case someone forgets their mask or something happens to it through the day. We would have something to provide to our students. We don't wanna make it something that happens frequently, but we want to have it just so we can move on through the day without having a student worry about not having the mask. We also purchased digital infrared thermometers for our health aides and our nurse to check students. If they were to come down to the clinic and have a fever, we can, we can check to make sure that if they do, we would isolate the student in a room closer to the door, and we would expect someone to pick up the student within a 30-minute period. And we also have a sneeze guard here, and there's all kinds of these things being produced right now. And some school districts have gone to actual plexiglass. Plexiglass is really expensive. It's hard to find. And it's heavy, and we have crowded halls, crowded classrooms, and I couldn't see us having our students carry them around, because someone's gonna drop it on our foot or bump into somebody. And plus, something this size in the plexiglass would probably be around $75 to $125. This particular product here, I believe Harden uses them as well. It is, it's more of a vinyl. It's more flexible. This one is the high school size, which is 21 inches high. And the reason we bought these is, is because, we're sitting here with our masks on, we can't say it's comfortable. I mean, it really isn't. We know that. It's warm. You feel yourself sweating, but it's reality. We were told that we have to have these, and we're gonna have them on our students and on our staff. But in order to get a little bit of relief, we figured that these, you could easily put them on your desk like this, and under at least some direction from personnel, I might be able to take my mask off a little bit. It's nearly, it does feel pretty good, actually, having a mask off and even having this here. The other thing, too, is even with the cafeteria, 300-seat capacity at Riverside, we can fit about 91 kids in the cafeteria if we only sit them on one side of the tables, every other seat. These might give us a little bit more flexibility, maybe having them on both sides of the table, but alternating spots and eating lunch. We know that some kids aren't gonna like carrying these things around, but the way I'm selling it is, it's nice to have them, because you can get some relief. You might be able to sit closer to some friends during lunchtime, and, you know, you can still see out of it. Some of the other partitions or these guys that we saw were really short with corrugated PVC. You really couldn't see out of them. And, you know, they weren't very portable either. So we have these, one for every student in our district. The elementary ones are a little bit smaller. They sold them in 14-inch height, 16, 18, and 21. We were gonna get the 14s for the elementary, but we found that by ordering the different sizes, the price went up a little bit. So we got the, the K through six is the 18-inch height. It's not gonna be too much for the kids at the elementary level. They're not really moving around like high school kids, so they're not gonna be carrying them so much. But we have tables at a lot of our elementary schools, and we're putting kids at each end of the tables with these partitions. The other thing we're looking at, too, right now, we're exploring is electrostatic disinfecting spraying machines as well. Some districts are turning to those for quickly disinfecting things like playground equipment or even school buses. Those are expensive as well. Some are electric with batteries, battery-powered, for more portability. But you're looking at anywhere between $800 and $1,500, depending on the size, and whether it has a big backpack, or if you have to change cartridges more often. We're still looking into that right now. The delivery date on those seem to be about two to three weeks, so if we're gonna make a decision on it, we're gonna have to make it pretty soon. That's what I have right now. We also are getting some plexiglass for the high-traffic areas, like where the clinic is and where the main office is, to protect some of our administrative assistants as well. Teachers are gonna have these, too. Every teacher's gonna have one of these.
Just to make sure I'm fully tracking with the, the partition there, is it definitive that you're not required to wear the mask behind that? Is that, is that definitive? Answer, or is this what's the criteria?
If, the rule for us is, if we can maintain a social distance, we can take the masks off, okay? We're leaving it up to the teachers in the classroom. If they feel comfortable that the kids are far away, they're not moving around, they're not shouting, they can put the partition up, they can take the mask off, so long as they're in that space. So again, it's to give them some relief. I can't imagine having kids wear masks from the time they get on the bus to the time they leave school. It's gonna be very difficult. We understand that. We're just put in a tough position where it's, it's a mandate, but this will give them some relief behind the partition, the mask down.
No, and I definitely, I add to, 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 we're moving in this direction, trying to relieve as possible from the mask mandates. The, but I, as we go through the agenda, there, you know, I'm I'm not sure if I caught all of the, have memorized all of the items, but we're spending about $300,000, as I recall, for PPE-type material, whether it be the, the hand sanitizer and the partitions and other things, and maybe I missed something as well. But, but just so everybody knows, you know, this, we're trying to balance it all, but, but we are spending money. We, we have to spend money to do this. But I think it's also important that, to recreate as much of the normal classroom environment as possible with the partition. So, so like, I don't think we have a choice, but it's, it's not inexpensive.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I don't have the pricing sheets in front of me right now. I think right now, we're closer to 200, but with the obvious potential where we're gonna probably have to buy more hand sanitizer. Two gallons aren't gonna last the duration of this health crisis. At least, I don't think it will. Also, we have the same type of dispenser, just a smaller version, that will be attached to each bus. As you walk onto the bus, we encourage students to use it. We're not gonna force them. They have to wear masks when they're on the bus, but these will be available as well if a student or a parent wants their kid to wash their hands before getting on the bus or getting with the, with sanitizer.
I, I don't wanna mislead anyone. I did, I saw the details online, you were spending $91,000 or so for the, for the hand sanitizer. I thought I saw another one out for $200,000, but maybe I'm just mistaken, misremembering.
91 was partitions, right?
This is maybe just kind of a quick overview. So at the June 30th meeting, we were approved a resolution for up to 100,000 authorizations to purchase PPE. Is our, our authorities up to 15,000, you know, without board approval for our board policies. So that initial 100,000 was spent on the official order for the dispensers. I think we bought 375 dispensers, about 850 gallons of hand sanitizer, 20,000 larger masks, 5,000 the kids' mask, the plexiglass, all that stuff. That was around 90-some thousand, I think, between all those orders and the dispenser for the buses. And then the partition order that's on the agenda is about another $91,000 or so, to purchase about 4,500 of those. And then there's an ask on there for additional authorization for another 100,000. Boy, they come along here and then in the future, you know, we have electrostatic sprayers or just other things that we need to get to get the school year moving on. So that's what, so as of now, we probably spent around 185,000 in total with additional 100,000 authorization. And we do have some grant funding, which I'll go through. I'll show you what that looks like. Should I remember 300,000, it's like in my head, if you could break it down and continue talking about how it's, it's being spent, it definitely will be spent.
Mr. Pleco, at the end of the day though, this, we, we didn't like the forecast. We left this money sort of in a pot, knowing we had to spend it. So this is budgeted.
We, he did have, I did put in the May forecast, I think it was around an additional 100,000 or so for that because the grant funding was separate from the final forecast. Some of that wasn't known at the time and you're constantly changing, but, you know, we did build in for that in the May forecast.
So currently with the peers funding, we're, we're in an okay place.
Right.
But as soon as we start exceeding those dollars, those are money that are going to come from somewhere other than unbudgeted. I mean, those are unbudgeted and high.
Right.
So, so people are aware of that. We did include some of the June forecast.
I asked our athletic director, Mr. Boers, to give the board just a brief update. We were, we were talking over the last couple of days about all the different changes and all the rumors we're hearing about sports. I'm not sure that what he's going to tell you today is going to be true for tomorrow. But I did ask him to come. If for anything, you know, you'll hear about the insanity of the rumors that are going around and maybe what to expect. I did have a superintendent's meeting via Zoom today. As I told the board, we meet once a week, sometimes twice now. And it really, really sounds like Lake County may be going to not have sports. That was a very strong possibility. No one has committed that yet, but the conversations that I heard made it sound as if not too many people are confident that it's going to happen this year.
On that note, thank you, Dr. Boers. Good answer. Just like everyone's been saying, it's fluid, it changes all the time. Where we stand and where things stand right now, I can just kind of give you a little update if you have any questions. There's a lot of stuff going out there. And one thing it does not seem like is every, every decision maker is not on the same page in terms of state of Ohio. Ohio has a special association with the governor. You know, the county health boards play a major role as well. And so getting everybody kind of, and you can even tell by, you know, the Akron Public Schools today talking about, you know, they're going all online this, that school year until October, which should affect sports. Cleveland Public Schools, same thing, we already announced that. Portage County and Summit County Health Boards have recommended already, no sports until October. You know, each, it's just, you know, you look at the major league baseball, you know, they've got the, a value of resources and strict policies and they're still shutting games down already. They're five days in and shutting games down. So it's, it's just, that's what it's like. That's what it's like right now. For us, our trainer from Lake Health, Michael Paris, has done a tremendous job currently just kind of helping our follower protocols to return to play and train and practice when we can. We've had great numbers from a lot of our teams and programs that have been up here. We are at the face, face mask wearing stage, as, as we all are. How that works is when you're coming and going, mandatory. Athletes, coaches, doesn't matter. If you're inside, coaches pretty much guaranteed athletes only during downtime is the face mask suggested slash required. And when you're competing, it's okay. It's okay. Including coaches, we have coaches that are still able to go out there, compete show drills that they do not have, they're not required while doing physical activity, you have the face mask on than every other time. When you're going, let's say, two and throw, some teams go from the stadium to the weight room, mask is required doing that coming in. We still have our one-way in, a different way out. There's still sanitation bottles and paper towels everywhere. Coaches know they're sanitizing all the equipment as it's being done. We have, we have had, you know, our volleyball team's actually gone off, competing as a free non-contact sports currently right now. Volleyball, tennis, and golf, they are actually allowed to compete against outside of your own district. The other sports are considered contact and they can only compete within themselves right now. So there's been no scrimmaging or even, a lot of times in summer, you kind of go against somebody else and that has not happened for the contact sports. We're not going to have that. Have been allowed to do that. Ohio High School Association has said, told me here otherwise, August 1st, which is Saturday, we're going, we're moved forward. They sent out a survey to administration yesterday and for the first time, I think they're publicly stating, we better have some major backup plans. I know they do, but they want kind of collaboration, input of data from the member schools. And so kind of four main, main things they're talking about right now was one, just keep it the same until somebody shuts it down from a governmental level. Number two, maybe take the non-contact spring sports, move them to the fall with the non-contact fall sports. Have a season because you have baseball, softball, which we go all summer, quite frankly, amongst most of them. So protocols are a place and so that's one of the options that's being talked about. But again, if schools aren't in session, if we go online or it's red or whatever else, you know, delay. Just let's just say, okay, let's take it our four weeks, revisit again September 1. You know, keep practicing and training like you're doing, but nothing formally yet. Let's just see where the data is and where the curve is and all that good stuff. Or cancel right now. Cancel right now fall and let's reevaluate if we can ever get the fall in at some point. It's going to be a combination of seasons. If it's short, three shortened seasons, if it's overlapping. And so that's kind of where things are at. So I know that survey information from the association is supposed to be gathered through tomorrow and it will have some idea. But, but again, I think a lot of us would expect the governor to come out and say something today, quite honestly. As we're, you know, a couple of days away from, from form starting and handing out equipment and, you know, as soon as I have equipment's hand, I'll give it back if you can't. I mean, it's, it's crazy, all the things that go into it. But we're hoping Thursday, now Thursday, we hear something. If not, we're just going to proceed, like I say, until somebody tells us otherwise. And that could be, you know, the governor, that could be Ohio Department of Health or Lake County, like Dr. Kayla said. So we're just, we're just reacting and trying to do our best, you know, and just keep the kids safe and keep everyone upbeat and just do what we need to do.
Our conference meeting is Thursday at 1:00. More discussion will occur.
Which ironically is, is right before the governor's press conference. So anything to talk about for that hour and a half may change 30 seconds after we adjourn.
I don't, I didn't schedule it. I mean, you never can picture that. Why don't we do this?
Seriously.
I'd like to.
Right? I agree, yeah. Just one. So other, other, like, quite any, anything that was, no. I mean, just, just trying, just cross the fingers.
All right. Thank you. Okay, we did put out a survey to our teachers to find out two things. Number one, who has a medical issue that might preclude them from returning to school if they, you know, go back to a traditional setting. And since we're offering an online option that they might be the first ones we would consider to teach those classes. And we had 19 say that they did have some medical issues. Part of the requirement is that they have to bring them out to us from a doctor's that their health would be in jeopardy if they were to return because of a health ailment. And we also had 16 say that they would, they don't have ailments, that they would volunteer to do so. Now, that sounds like quite a bit of features, but you have to understand that because some school districts are starting earlier than us, or like a week ahead in terms of the surveys and things that are going out. And from what I'm seeing right now, between 20 and 30% of students and families are choosing the online option in other areas of schools. If I'm not mistaken, I think I heard 900 students in Madison want to be online. I heard around 2,200 will be Eastlake. I looked at the numbers in Menner and many other schools hovered around 20%. They had it broken down by percentage. So right now, we're at 297, but we have until August 7. It seems that most numbers increase rapidly just a few days before the deadline. Which leads me to my next, next point is when we sent out our, our plan, we did get a lot of questions brewing on social media. I would say some of the questions were easily answered in our document. I just don't know if people read all the way through it. That we had a little bit of an issue, we thought, with the way it was linked up. But there were a couple of questions that weren't answered in the, in the document. And now what we're doing is we're putting together the frequently asked questions that we're gathering from everything that we hear. There's through phone calls, through social media. And right now we have about nine pages of frequently asked questions. Well, we're putting it together. We're not able to answer all of the questions yet because we don't know exactly how many students are going to be interested in the online option, the remote option. It's kind of a double-edged sword because parents want to know, why are you going to be offering this class remotely? And our answer is no, we're not sure because we don't know how many students are going to be doing the online option. And I've been trying to remind parents this, is that this online option is there. Not necessarily the pick between two different types of schedules that are offered. It's there because some parents have expressed to us that they're uncomfortable sending their kids back under the, this atmosphere of health crisis. And this is the best we can do. We can't offer every class remotely that we offer in a traditional setting. It's just one of those things. We did receive some calls about, are we going to offer AP classes remotely, which is very difficult. And in my conversation, I'm thinking to myself, you know, it goes not even to the higher-end students with the more rigorous classwork, but also some of the basic classes or the, or the electives that may be out there that a student might be interested in taking. It's just that we can't offer every class in both models. We just can't do it. We're trying our best. We know that eventually we're not going to make everyone happy. But at least for us, we're trying to get an answer to people. We're trying. I don't know if you want to add anything, Nick? Nick has been working on the questions. Melissa's been working on the, we all have been working on how we're delivering this model. It's a, it's a, it's a challenge.
So the goal in the, in the next couple of days is to kind of re-edit the original document we sent out. Because as we said on the first page, this document is fluid and may need to be adjusted or changed based on new information. So this will never really ever be finalized. I mean, it could always be changing based on new recommendations or guidelines set forth by health officials. But the plan is to incorporate a whole slew of frequently asked questions at the, at the end of this document. Meanwhile, while editing some of the pages that we can, because some of the information was tentative or not really finalized, and then pushing it back out again to all the families and saying, here's the most updated copy of the plan with a lot of frequently asked questions answered. And, you know, again, reiterating the deadline. So hopefully that will help in the next couple of days. I know by far the, the number one question we had about remote online learning, which we clarified a little bit yesterday, was, you know, how long students would be required to be on their computers day in and day out? And we were able to narrow it down to, for students in grades K through six, the instructional day will be from about 9:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. But, so that's about five hours, but there will be breaks scheduled, you know, in between for, you know, lunch and recess or just time to get away. And, but it will be up to the individual teacher on how they schedule those four or five hours throughout the day. And then for grades seven through 12, the instructional day will mirror, you know, more so a typical day at Riverside Campus with the instructional day from 9:00 a.m. to 2:15 with scheduled breaks in between.
Even, even things like the AP classes, it's not that we're throwing it into the wind altogether. We are trying to find some options, you know, for a student that, and, you know, these particular cases that want to continue with a real rigorous program. We're going to do what we can to try to help a lot of the student along, but we have to get pretty creative to try to make that happen. We can't promise anything at this point, but it's not like we're not either looking to find an option or even taking suggestions if someone thinks of something that we have.
But there's 97 people that have so, so far signed up. Do you have a kind of general idea if there's more? High school, elementary school, middle school? Is it an even split?
I could tell you exactly.
Well, and, and what I've been checking, it's a fairly even split. I don't know. You know, obviously there's a little disparity between the elementaries, but otherwise I would say they're all hovering right around doing the same percentage from building to building. At least, and I checked, I don't know if it was earlier today. So they're all kind of in the same ballpark.
One thing we're looking at at the elementary level is to suspend band because it does take the kids out from those classes and brings them all together in one area. And we're thinking about modifying, maybe having more of like a music enrichment type of, of program. It's not going to be any different than the music coming in, but we're not going to, I, I don't think we're going to have kids playing instruments. At the middle school and high school level, I believe the high school program was approved or, see, they don't want me to use the word approved, the health department. They looked at it and thought the plan was doable at the high school level. Some other districts are still having band inquire with band having coverings over the bells of the instruments to stop from the particulates being blown out. I, I don't know the science behind it all. We know that the program is very important for our students here and our parents. And again, we're trying to do what we can do, but it's not only the particulates, but also the space. So it's not easy.
Just a question if I could. On the, I understand the, the problems with trying to schedule the classes online or in person or what have you. Are any of the classes likely to not exist at all because of the breakdown? So like the AP classes and other things? I mean, I'm assuming that we're going to have at least one section of that, whether it be online or in person. We're not going to lose anything from our curriculum, I would say. It's just a matter of how it's delivered.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if you want to pipe in, but for, for me, the, you're going to have more option being in, I believe, than out. But I think we have to wait to see the interest of being out because the more students that are out, which means the more staff we need to move from the traditional setting to the remote setting, might offer a few more options for us. We just don't know what the numbers are going to, what the numbers are going to look like. You know, if, for like any other district, we're looking at 20 to 30%. If we're around 20 or 30%, it's going to be more teachers than what we see here.
That's Tom's point, that children that have opted to stay in school are not going to see their class offerings go away as a result?
I, yeah, I don't think it's too, if the numbers are, are low, I don't think it's going to be to a significant level. I, I don't, because you're not taking too many staff out.
So, Dr. Maud, do you know which, do you have a sense of which classes might be at risk?
It would, so where I started planning from is from the middle. So making sure that courses that will be graduation requirements are filled, you know what I mean? And then kind of working from there to either end of the spectrum. So whether it's a high-level class or a class for right now. And I'm not talking special education because that's a whole different ballgame. You know what I mean? And, and certain mandates that occur with that particular population of students. So whether it be at-risk classes for students and then some of our AP classes. And, and I don't know, to be honest with you. I mean, I, I did a skeleton schedule with what we have for people medical-wise and I, I can place them all. You know what I mean? And, and we can run a pretty decent online program, but that's probably without any AP or honors classes offered, taught by Riverside teachers. Now, that's not to say there aren't other options, but they come at a cost. You know what I mean? At whose cost? I don't know yet. We haven't gotten that far. But, and that was a conversation that I had with the mom today was, you know, she said, I can't make any decisions because we don't have enough information from you. And I said, I can't give you any more information because I don't know what I'm wearing. And I said, I can't give you any more information because I don't know what I'm working with. I mean, I realize it's a terrible, like, we're at a terrible standoff for lack of a better word. Yes, absolutely. But I don't, I don't know what to do about it. I can't, I can't, I'm looking to staff to complete programs. And here's the reality. Neither one of them is going to be exactly what education was in the 1920s school year. I'll even go one year back from that and say in 1819. So people need to understand that, that, that we're going to do the very best we can to meet every student's need. But if you come traditional in school, there is going to be PPP, PPE expectations. There are going to be social distancing expectations that you may or may not be particularly on. But that's what has to happen for you to be here in school and for us to run a program. For us to run a remote program and keep your kids safe because that's your primary concern, there also has to be a little give and take. And part of that is going to be, we cannot run all of those same classes. We just cannot do it. You know what I mean? So I, I feel like I need to say that. I say it with a heavy heart because it doesn't make me happy to have to make those decisions. But those are decisions that we're tasked with to do the best that we can. I have a meeting tomorrow with, with the teachers union to go over what the skeleton plan looks like and then to talk about where we might be in some of the specifics of the remote line. But to be honest with you, I don't know that we're not going to be having another conversation about things looking different here. You know, and then, then we haven't even talked about, about a hybrid situation. Like, I, I can't, I have literally explode right off my shoulders if I have to. I, I, right now, we just need to get these two problems together. So, and it's, I, again, I say we are working as hard as we possibly can to meet the needs of every student in the district, whichever end of the spectrum they might have to be on. But there is going to be some giving to.
It was never our, yeah, it was never our intent to have a hybrid program. I know some other school districts are doing that. But I think in order for simplicity and consistency and letting parents know where we are in a certain part of the color code, we don't want to be bouncing in between three different models. I know some districts are, you know, yellow is in school, orange is the hybrid, red is out. I think that would not go very well in our community. I think we need to be either in, and if we're told we need to be out, then we are out in the remote setting. Just with a more rigorous remote program and concentrating on those two. And hopefully that they're going to be strong enough to, you know, have our kids learn. And, and hopefully this thing is over soon. And we can go back to business as usual. Do you have anything else? Still working hard, Dr. Malinger.
Oh, go ahead, put my soapbox away now, thanks, though.
We've been spending a lot of time together, that's for sure.
And he's, you can't see his facial expression. He's grinning from ear to ear with how much time we've been spending together. Thank you for everything.
I hope they don't have to do that.
That concludes my report.
Great, thank you very much. That takes us from the flat on treasure report.
Okay, we're going to do some slides first, just because it's the end of the fiscal year. All I want to do is some results. Some of our grant funding options. I did give the board two sheets that are candid that is from the slides. Just maybe you can see it on the screen. Especially in years, it's a little hard to tell. So this is an overcap of the COVID-19 funding updates, just like delivering instruction, all changes lately. School funding has also felt the effects of that. So this list is kind of in order, the way things have been announced. And several have asterisks next to it because there's something to change. So back when the Federal Cares Act was passed, this is the federal bill that got people stimulus payments of $1,200 or, you know, payments. Part of that was, there was the elementary and secondary school curricula relief fund as part of that. So the federal bill, these funds to different states based on the title, the titles that they have. The Ohio Department of Education subbranded that to the individual school districts. So our initial allocation was $436,471.56. Part of that funding is the non-public obligation, which is initially a $10,401.27. Basically, we had registered some of the funds for our non-publics, I'm sorry. Basically, we have to hold those funds and they tell us how they're going to spend it. The asterisk is next to that, it's something to change. The US Department of Education, in my opinion, this month, that said that the way that the funds are being allocated, the non-publics, is usually based on every one of their students enrolled and not based on title funding. But the problem is the allocation of public schools is based on title funding. They're kind of using two different formulas. So if, if that, right now, what's called a common period, this month, so if that rule goes into effect, the non-public education portion will basically increase, which will take funds away from us and direct those to non-public schools. Those funds, so that was part of $440 million that was allocated to the state of Ohio. That was our allocation that came into us. We have until September 30th of 2022, we use those funds. And, you know, these were awarded fiscally during 2020, we're going to use those, we decided to participate in 2021. So that was back in March or early April when the Cares Act was officially passed. In May of this year, is when the governor announced the quote-unquote 3.7% state funding cut to public schools. The problem with that is this was not 3.7% across the board. It was allocated based on the prior school funding formula that was in effect to basically districts like Riverside. Because they're a higher loft district because of property tax valuations. So we saw a large, partially larger weighted cut. So our state funding cut was really 13.4% or $1,119,000. So that occurred in May. So they deduct that from our funding payments. The problem was we were paid more than we would allocate for that fiscal year. So in June, we actually sent, you know, now our payments get reduced to zero. We sent back $300,000 back to the state that we've overpaid for that fiscal year. And then, so in reaction to that, the Ohio Legislature passed House Bill 164, which had a lot of different educational parts to it. What the financial piece to it was a reduction offset payment, which basically capped school districts in Ohio. So what they did was they take what your state funding cut was, they met it against your CARES allocation. And no district would be cut more than 6% and you got those two together. So when you do the math, it comes out, we got $181,400 back from that initial state funding cut. Now that July 1st started fiscal year 2021, the state has not decided what the cut is going to be this year. But what they decided to do was continue that same funding level for this coming fiscal year. So that way they don't end up overpaying districts or, you know, they can adjust it at a later time. So for fiscal year 2021, we're tentatively cut the same $119,000. And then they decided to, we're going to factor back in that House Bill 164 payment again in FY2021. The problem is there's not another $430,000 of CARES funding. So our debt loss is still pretty large. Those numbers are also subject to change because, as we saw this fiscal year, they waited until the second to last month. So who knows? It's kind of unprecedented what we're in right now. It could get better, it could get worse. It all depends on state of Ohio's revenue. If there's additional closures in the future, businesses, like less sales tax and income taxes, things like that. You can face further cuts or you might just be held where we're at. Earlier this month, they released, Ohio, the state of Ohio applied for $100 million in CARES funding. That was, it's now called the coronavirus relief fund. These funds are for PPE and unbudgeted expenses for open school year. One thing I forgot to mention, the initial CARES funding up at the top can also be used for that purpose along with other purposes as far as delivering online instruction, purchase of Chromebooks, you know, laptops, things like that. There's several other categories that those can be spent. This new coronavirus relief fund, we're basically getting $212,274, kind of our initial calculation we're going to receive. Those have to be spent by December 30th of this year. It's my understanding that, you know, these purchases that we're making of the PPE and the dust fields, even though those things have kind of already occurred, we'll be able to post those to those funds and, you know, kind of put the money back in the general fund. So that's kind of the ultimate goal between this coronavirus relief fund and the initial CARES funding is trying to protect the general fund budget. And, you know, like the $436,000 allocation we can use for teacher laptops and Chromebooks. But those are coming out of our improvement fund. So I'm hoping that, you know, after you do the restrictions in detail, what we use those funds for. I'm hoping that we actually keep those expenses on TI, on general fund. That way it kind of offsets, let's try and keep the general fund as whole as possible. We're still working through that process to see how that, how. Governor's under received education relief fund, which is another part of the Federal Cares Act. No announcement made on those funds. So there is some type of additional funding to be done through that. I don't have any information on what that might be. So if you then all those items together, not that they truly got together, it's a, it's a loss of 1.2%. Factor all those things in at this time, but a lot of those numbers are subject to change. Anybody have any questions?
Just for the record, we, when we did the five year forecast, we took the $1.19, $1.119, sorry, $100,000. Those are not included in the budget, so we, we have to remove those from the budget. So we took into account the losses.
Yes.
And we also, because we're going to include the $436,000 of CARES funding as a separate fund, that wasn't on budget. So for us, spending those dollars is getting reversed. That's not affecting, right now, it's not affecting our general fund.
Yeah, not, not.
So, so, so kudos to you because we, we did a good job of planning that, putting those aside and making sure that our general fund would still look the same so far. So far, the caveat, so.
And that's kind of a, if you have any other questions on that. The next slide I'm going to go into is actually looking at our fiscal year end results. I'll just take a little cutoff here on the screen. So, you know, we do a five year forecast twice a year, filed in May and filed in November. On June 30th is the end of our fiscal year. So we closed our books earlier this month. And so I just wanted to kind of compare where we came in, compared what we projected. The first two lines, general property tax and public utility personal property tax, those numbers are already known because you get payments twice a year. So those numbers are, didn't change from the forecast. The third line, unrestricted grants, and that's our state funding line. And the reason for the $330,000 variance is when the governor initially announced the funding cuts, you had the option of paying the funds back within the same fiscal year or rolling it to the next year. Initially decided we're going to roll it to the next year instead of taking it going forward. But then after the way the accounting that it worked, the way they distributed payments, it would have created a large unrecognition. Bank reconciliation in the fiscal year. So we made the decision, plus with the House Bill 164 payment, it wasn't as large as we thought it was going to be initially. So we decided just to pay those back in June. And we, everything was offset because it also created, it created other nuances in the treasurer's office as far as getting $0 payments from the state. I had enough funds that some of the deductions came off and cutting checks for things that you don't have checks for. Dissimulations to different places such as the retirement costs is a big one. So by this paying it back in June, simplified things going forward. And it cuts that within that same fiscal year, keeping that, that cut of that funding. So that's what the $330,000 variance is. It's more of a timing difference than, than, you know, being incorrect on projections, basically changes fiscal year 2021. That will have more revenue because it's really kind of that deduction next year. Restricted grants and aids, you were within less than half percent of what you expected. Property tax allocation, which is actually, it's what the state caused, but it's your home state, rural state. We were within 0.6% of that. All of our operating revenue, you're, you're receiving about $52,000 more than we projected, which is only about 1.1% variance. That includes, you know, joint financing district revenue, interest revenue, a lot of classroom fees, preschool fees, paper state fees. And obviously, there's a lot of uncertainty with sports being canceled and preschool refunds and all that stuff. I thought it was going to be pretty close to that. So overall, our total revenue, so about a half percent, 1.5%. A little bit lower than expected because of the, the change in the way we handle the state fund. On the expenditure side, for salaries, it came in about $93,000 lower, 0.39% lower. Employee retirement benefits, this is like the health insurance costs, insurance, retirement proportions, came in 0.53% lower. Purchase services came in about $393,000 lower, about 42%. And the reason for that too is, I'm going to jump ahead to the bottom, estimated encumbrances at the end of the year. So that's kind of things that have been encumbered, purchase orders have been issued, but haven't been paid. So we had several large payments that, you know, we already encumbered it. We owe those funds, but they don't actually, it's time difference, they don't get paid till fiscal year 2021. Things such as, we have some holdings of billing, some invoices for like our former IT providers. We work through that process, money we go into like day field schools for the care program. Billing dispute on that and some other larger invoices. So the time, the payments that happened in this year will happen in fiscal 2021. So that's why the encumbrances are higher and the purchase services are. Supplies and materials is only about $38,000 lower, 2.6%. And capital outlay came in about $5,000 lower. It's 18% was the larger variance, which is a small dollar amount, so it's pretty, it's pretty, pretty close there. And all other objects within 0.35%. Transfers out, so in the year, we did a transfer of additional funds and to food services support that and to athletics and some of the other funds. So we came pretty close on that. So our expenditures came in about 1.23% lower than we'd originally thought, leaving us with a cash balance in our general fund of $15.00. Anybody have any questions on those results? Just a few additional updates in addition to the slides. Oh, I also want to talk about interesting, I'm going to figure out that one. This year, we earned about $307,000 on the left hand side from our operating funds, including general fund, bond retirement, joint financing, your permanent fund. So basically each month, we see interest that we allocate to the different funds based on fund balance. And even our remaining instruction fund, we earned about $249,000. So fiscal year 2021, it was just over $1 million in interest. On the right hand side, this kind of shows historical for comparison. That interest income will drop significantly this fiscal year because of great cuts. So we're earning, we're eating close to 2%, even more than 2%. And now I think as of today, we're eating about 0.37. So it's a significant drop, so that, that will be, we projected that in the future years in the forecast. And it might be lower than what we initially thought. So a few other updates, this is what I mentioned earlier, electronic fee. So we decided to support online payments. We do online payments through the campus, used to be on high school books. And so parents are being charged $2.49 per transaction. First implement the online payment system in campus. We were allowed to charge different amounts for electronic check and credit card. And we kind of base the amount based on what you can charge on my school books. And we basically pay each month the credit card processing fees and banking fees. And then what we collect on those convenience fees offsets that cost. And then, you know, having, looking at what the costs are, electronic check is like 35 cents a transaction. We're a credit card. Where a credit card payment is 35 cents a transaction. It's 2.35% Visa master, scrubber card fee, 1.15% campus fee. There's a very little fixed network fee that based on how many dollars you collect that month, there's a certain dollar amount for that. So credit card payments are a lot, lot more expensive process than the electronic checks. So our thought process was, let's let people pay electronically, handle less cash and checks. There's no fee to do that. So as long as you have a checking account or savings account, put it in your account, write a number. It wants to secure system outside of an infinite campus. So if there's a breach of an campus, that data is not helping, a separate system through the bank account. So that way you have the option of making those payments online, no charge if you use a bank account. You can still use a credit card and it's the $2.49 fee. And you can make, you know, you can pay your school fees and put money on a lunch account and put money on a latch key, all on transactions. You're not incurring on fees. Obviously with, you're unknown with sports and are we, you know, who's going to be online, who's not? Are we going to have lunch? Are we not going to have lunch? You know, if we're not, if we're online, we're not going to collect lunch fees. So we don't know how it's all going to shake out in the end, but we felt like this was a good benefit to offer without incurring. Also on tonight's agenda is the first transfer to the termination benefits fund that we established in previous meeting. It's another thing in the finance committee. It basically sets aside funds, a separate fund from the general fund to pay for severance payments. If you retire or if you decide your vacation time or sick time, putting a set dollar amount each year into this fund. And that way it helps manage spikes. A lot of retirements in one year, you may pay out a lot of severance. Other years, not so much. I mean, there's some years we pay out hundreds of thousands, some years we pay out almost nothing. And this helps us manage those cash flows, putting a separate fund. So it's just a transfer from the general fund to this other fund. And instead of seeing a spike in the general fund, like, oh, my salaries go up so much this year. Eight teachers retired and paid all these severances or something that, you know, that takes that uncertainty out of the forecast, puts in a separate fund and you can monitor that as time goes on. Before the pandemic, I was planning on transferring additional funds to start building up that balance. But because of all the cuts, we kind of kept it lower to what we think we might pay out this year. You know, if next year, if you need to transfer funds at a later time, we can do that. Or, you know, worry about maybe building the balance at a later time. There we talk about the additional $100,000 for personal protection equipment. Also on the agenda tonight is the welding lab, the open bids last week. The sealed bid process, we had four bids come in, paint space construction came in the lowest at 213,000. Project, the architect estimate was about 290,000. They always aim higher because there's a lot of uncertainty there. You never know what bids are coming in. And if it's coming too far over the budget, then you have to go out and rebid as well. But all of this came in, they turned 13,000, they were other bids, but they were between 213 and 216,000. Last month, we talked about the Ericsson Tower agreement and the proposal that Ericsson gave to us. Had a discussion with them, they, you know, went through a 30-minute explanation of how competitive the cell phone market is. And Verizon's, you know, carrier tower, and they can't seem to get anybody else to get on there and spread T-Mobile, Berger, eliminated another player in the game and all that stuff. You might pretty much rejected the offer and said, you know, they were like, come back with your best offer. And so they came back a couple of days later and pretty much came back with pretty much the same offer. It was, because right now we receive $1,650 a month. Their initial proposal, there was three options. The third option of the perpetual agreement, we had to give us a lump sum payment, they're going to pay us again. They got that the same, so that one's, that one's definitely out. But the first option was reduce the rent from $1,650 down to $1,231. They increased it to $1,239, or $8 a month. Option two, which was reducing it from $1,650 down to $1,342 a month with a $5,000 signing bonus, they increased that to $1,361, which is a $19 increase in a $7,500 signing. So to me, it was pretty much, my response back to him in the email was, thank you, this is very disappointing. And I think you already know where we're going with that, but I would share it with the board. You know, I kind of told him like, oh, you know, we're only in our second year of this agreement. The board was pretty much, come take it down because it's just not worth it. How are we know a year from now, you're going to come back? And he's like, oh, no, we're not going to do that. And I'm like, there's no way you can guarantee that. So they gave us some nearby towers that are around and you wouldn't tell me, because my question was, you know, can you tell me what you're paying other towers? And that's all proprietary information. But I'm like, both you're paying the township or city, I can just go to township or city and ask them what it is and it's public records. And he still didn't give me, he just gave you where those towers are located. So I was going to try to look into that, but it's very low on priority, just, you know, with everything else going on.
Are they trying to say abandon the tower? I mean, they didn't, I mean, they, they're the ones who put out the capital outlay to build it. So are they, are they talking about banning, banning the tower or what is?
He basically said, no, we can't do that. I'm like, okay, well, what's our, you know, I just, I don't, I don't see it from our perspective, what.
What's that? Do we have to do that?
Right. So I'm assuming $8 a month was not enough to. Two more updates, discovery tours update, discovery tours. Who used to do our trip, they made news that Joseph Chippala was charged with 18 counts of wire fraud and bank fraud and falsifying statements and all that thing. So we have our proof of claim into the bankruptcy court back in 2018. When the bankruptcy, I'm assuming the criminal matter has to happen first before they finalize the bankruptcy. So I'm assuming it may be several years, you're fully truly having the outcome or playing back on that. We did everything that we can do to have our claim in. It's waiting to see, but just, I don't think we were surprised by the indictments just because if you're, if you're running a travel company, how do you not cover your expenses? If you're charging more than, than what you, your own cost. Not, not unexpected. And last thing, I believe the CARES funding, I wanted to mention one additional CARES funding that's coming available to us. Just to prove this week that the state is going to have an additional distribution of $50 million in CARES funding to school districts, STEM schools, educational schools, educational service centers as well. And this is for, to support connectivity for in-need students, basically for things like purchasing individual hotspots, in-home enterprise solutions, mobile hotspots, or internet connected devices, I'm assuming Chromebooks or things like that. Required for a one-to-one match, so we spent $10,000, we had to spend $10,000 more funds and then we get $10,000 CARES fund. They also said that you may be able to use our other CARES fund as our match. So no real details are called other than that, that there's $50 million that's going to be allocated to the school districts. But you break it down, it's probably going to be 30, 40, 50,000, maybe depending on the total count. School districts are between the public school districts and the joint educational districts. So that's something we'll explore and see what those opportunities are to get those. I think that's, that's all I have for my report.
Any questions, Marvin? That takes us to public participation. Public participation is open to members of the public who are attending tonight's meeting and first here at Riverside Campus. We understand there are a lot of questions and comments in the Zoom chat section during tonight's meeting. And those questions and concerns will be addressed by the district in the near future. The district plans to release a frequently asked questions document in regards to our recently released reopening guide. And any questions brought forward in the Zoom chat will be added in the frequently asked questions document. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education here in person will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic comments are limited. It'll take us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and vote on individually. First, up is finance and audit.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer and the state superintendent.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on any of these items? I think we've pretty much talked about all of them. Not, can we call the board to pack them?
Aye.
Lori Gieske.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Elizabeth Gracie.
Aye.
Motion carrying, personnel.
We have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by Superintendent A through C. Are there any discussion on any of these items? I think there was a no. Mr. Placko, can you talk about?
Lori Gieske.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Elizabeth Gracie.
Aye.
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 Motion carrying.
And then we also have resolution to approve the athletic supplemental contracts, which are listed on the agenda and are quite lengthy and I won't read them all. I have second. Any discussion on any of the supplemental contracts?
I just have one question. These contracts, no void if we don't have support.
We're in a process right now of working with the RLEA over what that looks like. No, there won't be no void, but there'll be some type of tiered system where if the season continues, there'll be at least somewhat partial payment up to certain dates and then a full payment up to a certain date.
When do we, yeah, on the agenda, or have we already seen some of them? I don't recall, I'm sorry, the non-athletic supplementals.
Next, special.
Next week, okay, thank you. All right, if there's no other discussion on that, I don't have a call.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Same.
Elizabeth Gracie.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Gieske.
Aye.
Motion carrying, program, and curriculum programming.
Motion to approve the items listed on the program and the consent agenda as recommended by Superintendent A through C.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Have we changed the handbooks for any of this COVID?
No, the guidance is the document that we're developing. So it's, it's. Yeah, I don't believe that.
No, we haven't, but I will tell you, it's interesting you bring that up, just as a side note. I was in a meeting with some other curriculum directors today and they, there are some districts that are adding something to their technology agreement that parents and students are signing. And we haven't had a chance to discuss this because it just happened today about if you have access to a recorded Zoom meeting, that you wouldn't be able to use that or alter it or, you know what I mean? Which was an interesting concept, I had never thought of that before. So I'm going to look at that, that might be coming to you. It wouldn't be a handbook thing necessarily, but it might be a change to our tech agreement, which is actually, I think, just in our handbook. So, but it was something to help protect teachers, to keep kids from doing what kids do, which is sometimes bad stuff.
You know, it's always do. Okay, real fast, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Elizabeth Gracie.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Gieske.
Aye.
Jennifer. Aye.
Motion carrying, grounds.
To approve the items on the grounds and the agenda items A through C as recommended by Superintendent A through C. Mr. Miley, any discussion? Can you call the board, please?
Elizabeth Gracie.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Gieske.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Motion carrying.
We also have the first reading of some board policies is I don't know, it's not to be learned on tonight, but it's, it goes with standards-based teachers evaluation. And the draft of that was, it can be found in the board docs.
All right, that takes us to the Board of Education update, if anyone has got anything they wish to add.
I'd like to congratulate all of our boards.
All right, with that, our next meeting, we do have a work session that is. August 18th at 6:00 PM and then our next regular board meeting is the 25th at 7:00 PM. Something else, I will make a motion to adjourn at 8:46 PM, if I can in the center, please. Call roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Elizabeth Gracie.
Aye.
Tom Heck. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.